Would you call for the vote, please?
Danielle McKenzie here. Jason Blair.
Hi.
Melissa Hunt.
Here.
Louis Williams. Louis Williams.
Here.
Adam Webb.
Here.
Mark Ham.
Here.
Glenn Lewis.
Here. Would you please stand and join me for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number two is a consent docket. Item A is receive and approve the minutes of the regular city council meeting held September 16th, 2019. Item B, receive the minutes of the regular planning commission held August 13th, 2019. Item C, approve observance of Thursday, October 31st, 2019, as Halloween trick-or-treat night. Item D, approve a contract extension with Community Development Services for technical assistance with the Community Development Block Grant Disaster Recovery Program. Item E is approve a contract extension with Silver Star Construction for on-demand construction services. And item F is approve a contract extension with Rudy Construction for on-demand construction services. Item G is approve a contract with Aging Services to provide home-delivered meals to Homebound Senior Adults in Moore using Community Development Block Grant. This is with CDBGE funds. Item H is approve a contract with the Moore Youth and Family Services for a community-based program to provide youth counseling program to residents of Moore based using CDBGE funds. Item I, approve a contract with Moore Youth and Family Services for a school-based program to provide an early intervention for secondary students in the Moore schools using CDBG funds. Item J is approve a contract with Metropolitan Fair Housing Council to provide fair housing services to residents of Moore using CDBG-dash-E funds. Item K is approve a contract with Bethesda to provide counseling for sexually abused children in Moore using CDBG-dash-E funds. Item L is approve a contract with Central Oklahoma Community Action Agency for rental and/or utility assistance for Moore residents using CDBGE funds. Item M, accept the public water sewer paving and drainage improvements to serve the Grow Phase Two located in the southeast quarter of Section 14 Township 10 North, Range 3 West, being north of southeast Fourth and west of Eastern Avenue, application by Meek Development. Item N, accept water, excuse me, accept public water and sewer improvements to serve the Estates of Belmar addition, Section Three, located in the southeast quarter of Section 32 Township 10 North, Range 2 West, being north of Indian Hills Road and west of Cinder Road, application by Valmar Goff LLC 100 miller. Item O is approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY 2019-2020 in the amount of $3,451,185.69.
Make a motion, we approve.
Thank you. That was a lot of reading. Okay, we have the bill spayed, boss. Now we can go to item three. Do what?
Vote.
Oh, would you call for the vote? Sorry.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes. Item carries. Now we have the bill spayed. Okay, item three is consider appointing Jack Joyner to the Moore Planning Commission to fill the unexpired term of Dana Moffett at Community Development.
Mayor and council, we did have a subcommittee of the council meet several weeks ago to consider applications for the open seat. We did interview four applicants, all in Ward Three because that was the open seat was in Ward Three. And we, the committee, decided ultimately with Jack Joyner to replace Dana Moffett's position as an unexpired term. And that, Jack Joyner is currently on the Board of Adjustments. That would move him up to the Planning Commission, in which case the committee also recommended Mr. Hermes Alvaro to replace Mr. Joyner.
Motion approved. All right, thank you. Thank you both. We have a motion in a second. Would you call for the vote, please?
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. Item number five is consider approval of professional services agreement with ADG Incorporated in the amount of $59,000 for the update of the City of Moore construction standards and specifications.
Mayor and council, this is a budgeted item. The city currently has no specifications for construction projects. This creates additional work for engineers on the development and the city side. And it does slow the approval process through the city and with ODEQ because they are required. We are asking for this amount to update the, or create, the city specifications. At the same time, as the specifications are being updated, we will need to update some of our standards. The last update for our city standard, construction standards was in 2008. And as the new specifications will outline certain requirements that must be met with construction, those will need to be shown in some of our standards. So this is not meant to update all of our standards, but just a portion of them. Both the specifications creation and the update in the standards are included in the $59,000.
Motion approved.
All right, thank you. Second, thank you. We have a motion in a second. Any other discussion on this item? No? Would you call for the vote, please?
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. Item number six is consider approval of a revocable permit to erect a sign in a public sanitary sewer easement at 740 Southwest 19th Street, application by Moore Real Management.
Mayor and council, this item is for the issuance of a revocable permit to construct a monument sign within an existing sanitary sewer easement along Southwest 19th Street. All of the properties located on the south side of Southwest 19th Street in the Fritz Farm Development, all those signs that you see there are already constructed within that sanitary sewer easement, and a revocable permit has been issued for each one. So this is just continuing the progress of construction in that area. The sign will look just like the other signs. The Fritz Farm does have standards for that. And again, the revocable permit is filed at Cleveland County. It can be revoked at any time for any reason, and any damages that might be incurred in the sign through our repair and maintenance of the sewer line would not be at the fault of the city, would not be covered by the city. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All right, thank you both. We have a motion in a second. Any other discussion on this? If not, would you call for the vote, please?
Danielle McKenzie.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. Item number seven is consider an agreement with Moore Faith Medical Clinic Incorporated for lease of a city-owned building located at 224 South Chestnut for a period of three years.
Mayor and council, for the last year, I believe, the Served Moore and the Moore Faith Medical Clinic have both shared this building, each occupant having half of it. The Served Moore organization has moved elsewhere. I can't recall where off the top of my head, but the Moore Faith Medical Clinic would like to go ahead and lease the rest of the building to expand their clinic and to maybe provide some opportunities for some other tenants. Be happy to answer any questions, recommend approval. And Dave Evans from the Moore Faith Medical Clinic is here to also answer any questions.
Just a couple, I'd be curious to know how the operations are running over there, what services you're providing, how many people you see, that kind of stuff. And then, Brooks, what about the lease and all that stuff? What's, what is the, what are we charging?
Well, I mean, it's a, it's a, it's a $10 a year lease. I mean, it's just to have occupants in the building, and then they take care of all the utilities and all that stuff, so. Mr. Evans, you want to?
Thanks so much. We're so grateful to Served Moore, by the way, because they gave us the opportunity to share that, those resources. And we're also, I think, all thankful that we haven't had anything like what we had in May 20th, 2013 since then, and thankful for the partnership. So the question to the number of patient care encounters over the last four years, we've shared with Served Moore for two years, well, four years altogether, we've had half the building approximately for the last two. 4,871 patient care encounters. We have a number of professional healthcare volunteers, several, many of them are here tonight, see in the blue shirts, and I'm so thankful for them. 30,741 volunteer hours, everyone is a volunteer. And the total bottom line, total value of care provided, medicine and medical care, $4,429,966. So happy to answer any, any questions.
Why don't you tell the audience in the cameras what you guys do over there? I think they'd like to hear that.
There's people just walk in? Do they make a great sound?
So, yeah, great questions. We would love for everybody to be able to walk in, but we have a waiting list. We see as many people as we can, but we do that mainly by appointment, and we usually keep a couple of open slots for really urgent care situations. We provide primary urgent care visits, free prescription medications and supplies, and a lot of them, that's our, that's our main expense, is really medicine. We provide medical caseworker assessment and assistance, spiritual care and encouragement, diagnostic testing. We have a partnership with DLO, and we do that at our cost and their cost, which is wonderful. And then, we do a lot of patient education and nutritional coaching and referrals to specialists as, as needed, as appropriate. We have partnerships with the local hospitals as well, and so we're able to connect many patients with them. And we have an amazing, amazing team, and these guys back here are just representative of the incredible volunteer team that we have. So I'm thankful just to be able to partner with them and with the city, and very grateful for a new partnership. More Public Schools has just adopted us as one of their causes for more love, and so really, really thankful, looking forward to the future.
Well, applaud your efforts and everything, but is there anything else you guys need?
Money.
Money?
We have a, Mayor Lewis, I'm so thankful to ask that question. We have a fundraiser on May, May the 15th, Tuesday night, and so our city manager has already bought his tickets, and we would love for everyone of you to be a part of that. A lot of our local businesses sponsor us, so.
Okay, how much are the tickets and where can they buy them?
$30, and they can buy them, they can go to our website, which is morefaithclinic.org, and be connected there, or on our Facebook page.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
What are your hours of operation?
So we are a part-time clinic, and mainly that's Thursday, Thursday evenings. We operate once a month, a women's OBGYN clinic that lasts usually all afternoon on Thursday. Our social workers, our caseworkers are there just about every day, working with patients and coaching and trying to connect them with patient assistance programs and other things that are going on through the week. We hope to be able to anticipate, be able to expand days and hours, and so we need, in addition to funding, we need, you see a bunch of doctors and providers back here in the audience tonight, but we could use more, and we especially need specialists, and we hope to be able to provide more specialist care.
Thanks very much.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Vote to approve.
Thank you, thank you both. But a motion in a second. Any other comments? If not, would you call for the vote, please?
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. Item number eight is consider approval of an agreement between the City of Moore and Adap Architecture for design of proposed expansions of the station and renovation of the public works facility.
Mayor and council, these are two projects that we want to be able to present to councils as we go through the next budget cycle, and our architect, Anthony McDermott, has asked that we formalize an agreement with him to provide the preliminary architectural services. He's done some work for us, but we've moved on to where we need to be able to have him do a little more detail, so we have better things to present to you next year during the budget cycle. I'd be happy to answer any questions. Mr. McDermott is here tonight, recommend approval.
Okay, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Thank you. We have a second?
I'll second it, but I have a question.
Okay.
So I don't see any financial numbers in here.
These are the, this is his proposal, and so what we'll do is, I've got some contingency funds to allocate towards this, and then that'll take care of that.
All right, thank you. We have a motion in a second. Any other discussion? If not, would you call for the vote, please?
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. Item number eight is consider approval of an agreement between the City of Moore and Adap Architecture for design of proposed expansions of the station and renovation of the public works facility.
Mayor and council, these are two projects that we want to be able to present to councils as we go through the next budget cycle, and our architect, Anthony McDermott, has asked that we formalize an agreement with him to provide the preliminary architectural services. He's done some work for us, but we've moved on to where we need to be able to have him do a little more detail, so we have better things to present to you next year during the budget cycle. I'd be happy to answer any questions. Mr. McDermott is here tonight, recommend approval.
Okay, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Thank you. We have a second?
I'll second it, but I have a question.
Okay.
So I don't see any financial numbers in here.
These are the, this is his proposal, and so what we'll do is, I've got some contingency funds to allocate towards this, and then that'll take care of that.
All right, thank you. We have a motion in a second. Any other discussion? If not, would you call for the vote, please?
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. Item number nine is consider ordinance number 92319, amending Part Seven, Chapter One of the City of Moore's Code by adding a new section, Section 7-106, creating a general fund reserve fund, providing for repealer, providing for several of the leases.
Mayor and council, at a fairly recent council meeting, it was discussed that we need to have a mechanism to where we have a general fund, reserve fund. We've kind of done it internally in the past, but we don't have anything formalized. We think that the proposed ordinance satisfies the objectives of the council. Happy to answer any questions, recommend approval.
Okay, do we have a motion?
Motion approved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion in a second. Any other discussion on this item?
Can I ask one question?
Sure.
I know that it starts out with the initial amount and then the goal of three months operating capital, which I think is a great idea. Do we have an idea of how long we think that'll take us to get there?
Well, several years, but hopefully, you know, the economy is, is good right now. Some good things may be happening in Moore, which will hopefully increase our sales tax opportunities, and so hopefully in future years, we'll be able to make larger contributions than the initial one.
Okay.
And if we don't have three meetings, we can do it. But we have to have those meetings. Okay, we have a motion in a second. Would you call for the vote, please?
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. Item number 10 is consider envision Moore Plan 2040 Amendment Number Two, located in the north half of Section 36 Township 10 North, Range 3 West, being south of Southwest 34th and west of Broadway Avenue, from neighborhood commercial to urban residential. Application by Farzani Development, Planning Commission recommended approval of this eight-one, or, excuse me, eight-zero, I'm sorry.
Mayor and council, items number 10, 11, and 12 on your agenda are companion items. This site is located west of South Broadway Avenue and south of Southeast 34th Street. The property was rezoned to C3 with the Apple Valley Neighborhood in the year 2000. Since that time, the property has remained vacant. The applicant is proposing to develop a higher-density patio home and duplex development that is 10.66 acres in total size, with four formalized common areas and a total of 80 living units, which results in an overall density of 7.5 living units per acre. To achieve the desired densities, the property must be rezoned from C3 General Commercial District to R1 Single Family District and R3 General Residential District as a planned unit development. The remaining portion of the original C3 site along South Broadway Avenue will remain available for future commercial development. So there's four tracts in this request. Tract number one is proposed as an R3 duplex development. It is approximately three acres in size with 29 living units. That's a density of 9.5 units per acre. This tract contains approximately one-quarter acre of open space. Tract number two is proposed as an R1 Single Family Patio Home Development. That consists of 2.15 acres with 15 living units, which is a density of about seven units per acre. And this tract contains just over one-half acre of open space. That's a dry detention pond. Tract number three is proposed as an R1 Single Family Patio Home Development. This is about approximately 3.5 acres with 24 living units, which is a density of seven units per acre. This tract contains no formalized open space. And tract number four is proposed as an R3 duplex development consisting of two acres with 12 living units, which is a density of six units per acre. This tract contains approximately one-quarter acre of open space as a dry detention pond. As stated, store mart detention is required for this development and will be provided by two detention ponds. Both will be heavily landscaped to serve as amenities. Access for tracks two, three, and half of track four is provided by Central Park Drive, which is an existing street in the Apple Valley addition. Tract one will have access to Southwest 34th Street with access to South Broadway Avenue. Pursuant to the envision Moore 2040 plan, the applicant is utilizing a planned unit development to achieve the higher densities. By utilizing a PUD, the city may relax certain density requirements in exchange for amenities that would not otherwise be required. The PUD proposal includes the following amenities: facade requirement of 70% brick, rock, stone, or other material that is masonry; increased landscaping with 70 trees and 35 shrubs that are focused around the detention ponds; 10% open space requirement, that includes a pocket park located in tract one with a playground, park bench, and sidewalks, providing a pedestrian connection to Central Park Drive, and buffering from higher-density uses by use of that same pocket park. It should be noted that no elevations of the proposed units were provided, with the applicant providing only photos of the common areas. It is unclear as to how the architectural characteristics will translate to the proposed duplexes or single-family homes. The good news is, is that home creations has been around for a while, and we've seen a lot of their products already built, so I think we have some sort of idea of what the homes will look like. The envision Moore 2040 plan calls for this location to be community commercial. Land use is allowed in community commercial include mixed-use development with up to 50% residential land use, and the applicant is requesting a change to the envision Moore 2040 plan to urban residential. And this application was reviewed as to its conformance with the intent of the plan. The plan does, the plan does show that common areas, buffering, and interconnectivity with commercial tracts are important, and this application does include all of those requirements. The application does meet many of the goals of the plan. And you can see some, some drawings of the development within your packet. This application is located along a, in a primarily residential area with an elementary school located just to the north of the site. The development of the 12.8 acres of commercial property, as was originally zoned back in the year 2000, is likely not feasible and may not be desired due to traffic, noise, and lighting concerns that accompany these large-scale commercial developments. Reducing the amount of commercial land use available while transitioning it to residential land use would be compatible with the overall development pattern of the area. Therefore, staff is in general support of the patio home and duplex housing at this particular location. The provided amenities within the PUD include the increased landscaping, provision of one acre of small, of small open space areas, and buffering from the existing single-family development to the south. If Planning Commission, and in your case, the city council, believes that the amenities provided meet the intent of the PUD requirements and the comprehensive plan, staff does recommend approval of, of this application, the rezoning application, and the preliminary plat. And I should note that the Planning Commission also requested, in addition to the PUD design statement, that no two elevations should be located next to each other. The applicant did agree to that stipulation at the Planning Commission meeting. If you have any questions, I would be happy to answer them.
Was there any discussion about buddying up to the FFA farm?
There were no discussions regarding that.
So we're not going to hear anything coming back that the farm stinks when we get the houses, but no, you will. No, we're not.
And these are rental, so.
Will this be a coveted project? Or, I guess?
Might, might be worth thinking about that.
The patio homes will all be rentals? They won't be for style?
No, they'll be for sale. They won't be plotted.
Okay.
It's likely that duplexes will be.
Rental.
But patio home will be plotted and sold.
Is home creation maintaining ownership of the duplexes, or we're just guessing they'll be rentals because usually duplexes are?
Just guessing.
Okay, I'm just curious.
Staff recommends approval?
Yes, I, I think that having that large commercial tract in this area is really not conducive to the public school right across the street. I think that transitioning to residential is appropriate.
And they plan opening in sidewalks to the school?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Did neighbors have any discussion about this at the planning commission?
We have not received any phone calls.
Neither.
Or, and there were no citizens at the Planning Commission meeting.
Usually they aren't. But, well, but with as much activity as we've had recently, I would assume that they would have been fired up if they were going to be, so.
Yes. Okay.
Make a motion, we approve.
Okay, item.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any other discussion?
Hey, Brooks, just, just another reason we need to begin looking, I know, at funding and all that, but making major improvements to Broadway. I know we're doing improvements at that intersection, but from two lanes to three or four would be best, but as things continue to push that way, we're going to.
It's on the drawing board.
Yeah. Another crosswalk will be needed, I'm sure.
Yeah. Okay, we have a motion in a second. Anybody else have any discussion on this?
Is anybody in the audience? Is there?
Is there anybody opposed to this? They would like to speak? Someone signed up?
Who seconded this?
I did.
Would you call for the vote?
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. Item number 11 is consider rezoning application number RZ 981, located in the north half of Section 36 Township 10 North, Range 3 West, being south of Southwest 34th Street and west of Broadway Avenue, from C3 General Commercial District to R1 PUD Single Family District Planned Unit Development and R3 PUD General Residential District Planned Application by Farzani Development, Planning Commission recommended eight zero approval.
Make a motion to approve?
All right, thank you, thank you both. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion on this item? If not, would you call for the vote?
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. Item number 12 is consider preliminary plat of Apple Villas located in the north half of Section 36 Township 10 North Range 3 West being south of Southwest 34th and west of Broadway Avenue. Application by Farzani Development, Planning Commission recommended approval of this item made zero as well.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Second. Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion on this? If not, would you call for the vote?
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. Item number 13, we've been asked to table this item at this time?
Motion to table out the vote.
Okay, thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Would you call for the table and vote?
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item is tabled. Item number 14 is consider authorizing the budget purchase of a John Deere 325G compact track loader from C.O. Boyd off the state contract in the amount of $64,980.65.
Mayor and Council, this is a budgeted item for the Parks Department to purchase a John Deere compact track loader off the state contract in the amount of $64,980.65. Our current Bobcat has been in and out of the shop over the last year, accumulating over $24,000 in repair fees. Being without a Bobcat, skid steer does make our Parks crew's job difficult, so we ask for you to approve this item. We'd be happy to answer any questions.
What's primary use of this?
To plant trees and remove trees, stump grinding, putting mulch into playgrounds through the off-season, snow removal.
Through all the parks?
Yeah, through all the parks, right, and just general projects.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, vote. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion on this item? If not, would you call for the vote, please?
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. Item number 15 is consider approval of a multi-year professional contract with Arbitrage Compliance Services, ACS, to review arbitrage compliance requirements on city bonds and notes.
Mayor and Council, our multi-year contract with Arbitrage Compliance Specialists is up for renewal. ACS is the firm we've been using to review our bonds and sales tax notes on each five year anniversary to ensure that the city's in compliance with the post issuance compliance requirements set out in our bond indenture and sales tax notes and required by the IRS to maintain our tax exempt status. While this is a four-year contract, the city can terminate the contract upon 30-day written notice, and ACS has always provided us timely reports whenever bond is required. We'd be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Does it budget it?
Yes.
Motion to approve?
All right, thank you. We have a motion to approve, and we have a second.
Second.
Thank you. Any other discussion on this item? If not, would you call for the vote, please?
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. At this time, we'll recess the City Council meeting and convene the Moore Public Works Authority meeting. Item number 16 is a consent docket. Item A is receive and approve the minutes of the regular Moore Public Works Authority meeting until September 16, 2019. Item B, approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY 2019-2020 in the amount of $1,234,399.2 cents.
Motion to approve.
Thank you, vote. We have a motion and a second. It's a consent docket. Would you call for the vote, please?
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. At this time, we'll recess the Moore Public Works Authority meeting and convene the Moore Risk Management meeting. Item number 17 is a consent docket. Item A is receive and approve the minutes of the regular Moore Risk Management meeting held September 16, 2019. Item B is approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY 2019-2020 in the amount of $400,189.20 cents.
Motion to approve.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. It's a consent docket. Would you call for the vote, please?
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. At this time, we'll recess the Moore Risk Management meeting and reconvene the City Council meeting. Item number 18 is item A, Citizens Forum for Items Not on the Agenda. Matt Mann has signed up. Would you like him to speak, please?
Thanks for letting me speak, I appreciate it. The main reason I'm here is to ask, why do we build residential neighborhoods? So encourage growth, right? So why do we not have speed bumps or speed deterrents in residential neighborhoods in the city of Moore? That's my question. I called four years ago and talked to Richard, and he told me it's because emergency vehicles can be deterred. They slow down, they can't respond as quickly. Well, I asked again two weeks ago, got the exact same answer I got four years ago, so I've learned through my days, don't stir up a problem if you don't have a solution. So I've been talking to the city of Norman for probably the past week, and kind of laid out the groundwork for their speed deterrent program. And I'm passionate about this subject. It's very real to me because I clocked a guy going 57 miles an hour down a residential street last night. So I basically say, we live on a drag strip. I wish Jason was here because he lives in our neighborhood. I actually brought some stuff to show you as far as how this solution could be presented. Sorry, I'm used to speaking in front of a lot of people, I just don't like a courtroom. I did bring these though for you, just to kind of look at, so maybe the city will start trying to create some kind of change with the residential neighborhood. So what I've printed out is, the city of Norman created this traffic program back in the mid 2000s where they laid out 200 speed tables, not speed bumps. So the reason they went with speed tables, and they talked to multiple cities around the United States that have speed deterrents in their neighborhoods. These speed tables are created to slow down your common commuters, but to allow emergency vehicles to respond timely, not to be slowed down. I mean, my wife and I have spent so much money trying to slow traffic down in our neighborhood. If you flip to the very last page of that, the, I put "our neighborhood"?
Not to interrupt you, but would you state your address first? That's one thing they ask me anyway, but I'm kind of curious, just I want to know where you live.
I live in Blue Stem Ridge. Our main street is 31st Street, and it's basically a drag racing strip from Santa Fe, half a mile to the east. And that's what the pictures you're looking at. So what I've included in this is Norman's program where they developed this, and I've talked to them, got feedback about how they developed it. And the very last sheet in that packet is the last edition Walnut Road Traffic Call Me, which is in my hand. This is about a 30-page document that they went through and laid out how they did this. That's the last one they've had to do in the city of Moore. So why I bring that up is, that street was only four-tenths of a mile long. The street we live along with no speed deterrents is half a mile long. And the city, we've talked and talked and talked, trying to get something to change, and nobody wants to address the situation. And why this really stirred up an issue with me, about three weeks ago, I saw a three-year-old girl cross the street, and a kid was sitting on his phone at 3:00 in the afternoon after school, got out, and she almost got smacked by it. Head down, going about 45 miles an hour. I mean, we have a legitimate issue here. I mean, I don't understand why it isn't being addressed. So that's why I'm trying to present this, to get something stirred up, get something changed. I mean, it's...
Can you send the motorcycle police officers over there for the next three weeks?
They've come. They put up the speed signs in our neighborhood. I know there's other neighborhoods with this issue, but that's why they created speed tables, to slow down, or not slow down your emergency vehicles.
Okay.
And we have dips going north and south in Blue Stem, but there is nothing preventing the speed.
There's no stop signs along that?
There's nothing. Stop signs, it's been proven too, if you want to read through this, that the stop signs don't deter speed. Most people run them, they just go through them, they'll slow down, keep going. But the speed tables, per se, that's what they call them, they're just longer, flatter. I'm sure everybody's been through Norman. They're all over. They did 200 of them. After they put 200 of them down the city, the citizens, some of them started complaining, so they slowed down. They changed the criteria for how they assigned speed tables to the neighborhoods. And that speed, I've been, I bought a radar gun just to kind of see if we would hit that 85th percentile that they talk about. And what they require is 600 cars passing daily on that street, plus this 85th percentile speed, 33 miles an hour higher. I clocked 72 cars in two hours last Wednesday when I got home from work, and we had 15 of the 72 going in excess of 33 miles an hour. And they don't slow down.
Do you all have a neighborhood association?
We do. We've got HLA, and...
Do you all meet regularly, or is it just...
They do meet, but the president recently resigned. She was running for one of the state seats, and she left the neighborhood there, kind of in some disarray. But I know Jason lives in there, I know Mark McBride lived in there on 31st Street. He's the one I spoke with to figure out how to do this, I've never had to do it before. And he said, "Talk to Jason," so I tried to call him, I haven't heard back from him yet, but he said, "Go to the City Council meeting, get your proof, get your problem, get your solution, present it, and see if they'll do anything." So...
And here they write that you need a circulation and support petition 60% needed.
Well, that is after these studies have been done, and it's been pre-approved by the city. Then you take the petition back to the HLA, the homeowners, and you get 60% signatures.
I would think we would do that before.
I'll be happy to do that, and I'll have it to you the next time City Council meets, if that's what you want. I mean, I've talked to everybody...
No, it's called by what you gave me.
Yeah, yeah, no, I understand. And this, you guys can keep this too, I don't know if anyone will even look at it, but this is the last one that the city of Norman did, the Walnut Creek or whatever it's called. And it was the, it's a street that, like I said, runs 0.4 miles. So I asked that the city consider making some change.
Those speed tables are very aggressive, driven, and I know they did have issues with fire trucks and ambulances going over them. But I would, I don't know, be curious, maybe we do a test neighborhood?
Well, my question surrounding the emergency vehicle thing is, why are emergency vehicles responding? It's because something's happened. Well, I don't want to see a kid get smothered across the street for an emergency vehicle to slow down. I mean, you'd have to come out and watch the traffic to really see it. Anybody could put the speed, the big sign out, everybody's going to slow down, but if you read through that, they actually give you the statistics where 50% of people, it was the, the median was 34 miles an hour, and then after the speed sign left, it jumped up to 38 miles an hour for 50% of the traffic.
So this is not anything new. I served on the traffic commission for years and years. I have been to Stillwater and set through, they did a whole study on them, and they produced an entire booklet on it. Have made a couple of attempts previous to now to see if we could get our city to embrace that, but we didn't get very far. So we can take it under consideration again and see if we can get some traction.
I'll be happy to show up to every meeting till something happens. So I'm just tired of sitting back waiting for a kid to get hit, so it's going to happen. It's a matter of time, I mean, this is, I don't know, you probably can't read my scribble, but this is my conversation with the city manager, the traffic manager in Norman, and he kind of told me how they did it, so.
Let me ask you something.
Yeah.
Would you be opposed to traffic cameras in your neighborhood?
No, I'd be, I'm fine with anything that's going to slow people down. I mean, I've even got a camcorder, I was going to just run with the radar gun and just get you the proof that you need. I don't know what else to do. It is an issue, there's multiple streets in Moore, just like ours, that have nothing to deter traffic. The neighborhood just to the north of us, exact same way.
About every third neighborhood has a street like yours.
Probably. And I understand, I mean, it would be expensive, I guarantee you, our HLA would figure out a way to pay for it if the city didn't want to pay for it. We just don't want something to get torn out. And I'm that serious about the issue. It's real deal. And it's, I just want the city to try to help prevent this. And then the last night was kind of my peak when I caught the kid going 57 miles an hour, 9:20 PM with the radar gun.
Why do you have a radar gun?
That's why. I bought it two weeks ago just to see how big of an issue this was, and I wanted, it's not going to matter unless I've got visual proof, but documented, whatever. It's me versus a piece of paper when it comes to that, but it's, I'll be happy to film it. I mean, you can see, especially when school gets out, all the kids running, the kids walking to school every morning, the kids coming, we're a feeder to Oak Ridge. So you've got all these elementary kids running around the neighborhood. I've got two twins six-years, I've got twins six-years old, the guy across the street has three kids. Everybody on that street is just tons of kids. So I just thank you very much for giving the time to listen.
Thank you.
So, Brooks, can you start the conversation internally?
I can.
Move. Please. Again.
Okay, item B is any items from the City Council trustees?
I had a call today from a lady that is, her vision is impaired, and she had some questions about our crosswalks and signaling up in the area of 12th and Santa Fe. She uses Uber and other means to get to where she needs to go, but she might walk up to the grocery store or wherever. But she had just asked about, and I hadn't gone to test the signals, but maybe upgrading, some of them are just visual, but now that we have more that are, give you a countdown so that you can hear. Her vision isn't, she's just nervous to cross 12th Street and can't get a clear view of walk or don't walk. So I don't know, it may be something to look at, maybe ACOG might...
I was going to say, ACOG used to have emergency funds for the, if you had a complaint on one, the ACOG would have money that would fix that to put in the timer. I don't know if they still do that or not, that's on the timer, but we could certainly look at that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Any items from the city manager and trust manager?
Couple of things. Mayor and Council, we'll have our first town hall meeting this Thursday, the 10th, at the station regarding the 1/8 sales tax proposal. So hope our citizens will come out and hear some good information.
Will you remind us what time that is?
7:00.
Okay.